I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good guards, would you please call roll?
Chairman Di Maria?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Here.
Mr. Bushnell?
Here.
Ms. Kiefer?
Here.
Ms. Sebreski?
Here.
Mr. Williams? Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Maddick?
Here.
Well done, thank you. Dr. McGorick, are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have an addition to the consent agenda to add personnel ratification, deletions to the consent agenda regarding religious exemption.
Thank you very much. And superintendent's announcements and spotlights, I assume we have some?
We do.
Ms. Raifert?
Thank you Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorick, other members of the board, good evening to you, good evening to our special guests that are here tonight, for obvious reasons, yes, we do have some recognitions that we are very proud to present on this evening. First, we'd like to begin with three Osborne High School students who are seniors and they recently received recognition for the 2016 Virginia Honors Choir. These students competed with some of the top high school singers in the state. The students were judged on their ability to sight read music and certainly their vocal ability. Ms. Angela Easley, Osborne's new choir director, and Sarah Weaver, who chairs the Fine Arts Department, are here with these very talented students, I'm going to ask if they would come and join the superintendent and Mr. Di Maria?
Director?
Yes.
Director Rock?
Uh huh.
I'm going to assume a Williams girl is going to get one of these?
Okay.
Mr. Williams, could you please join us down here?
Oh, nice.
Well, we know it's her mother. Wait, wait, wait.
No problem. So, we want to offer congratulations to these three students, I'm going to ask if they would join us as I call their names. Enrico Gagarin, who was selected for the Virginia Honors Choir as the top ranking bass in the entire state. And next, we have Mia Williams, who was selected for the choir as one of the top ten altos in the entire state. And then, we want to offer congratulations to Sean Willaman, who was chosen as an alternate for the Virginia Honors Choir. I'd like to note, I would like to note that the choir will perform at the Virginia Music Educators Association Convention on Saturday, November 19th, in Hot Springs, Virginia. Congratulations to both of you, thank you so much. All right, the school board continues to recognize the outstanding contributions made by instructional and support employees through its Apple and Pear Awards Program. The Apple Award is given to instructional or licensed personnel, and the Pear Award is given to support personnel. All recipients receive an MCPS apple red or pear green thermal travel mug, which you can't see in those lovely bags, and sometimes, some of them have parking privileges at their schools or departments or their sites until the next person is awarded. For the Apple Award, instructional staff is chosen for their demonstration of effective strategies and techniques of instruction, use of innovative approaches to support the instructional program, how they share ideas and/or materials, and a willingness to collaborate with their coworkers to improve student achievement, effective communication with parents, students, administrators, coworkers, and the community, and demonstration of 21st century skills for the 21st century learner by using critical thinking, problem solving, creativity, innovation, communication, and/or collaboration. The following Apple Award winners, if you would please come forward, Baldwin Elementary Diane Schroeder is a fun and energetic teacher, she makes class time exciting for her students and truly strives to build meaningful and lasting relationships with the children in her class. Ms. Schroeder is always willing to help other staff members and goes above and beyond to make sure that they have what they need to be successful. As head of the PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports Committee, Ms. Schroeder strives to make sure Baldwin students understand the importance of positive behavior, as well as ensuring the staff receives recognition for their efforts to make Baldwin a responsible, respectful, and safe place to be each day. Congratulations, Mr. Schroeder. You've got to stay, you have to stay like for the whole time. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Mr. Ken Kratzser. As a PE teacher, Ken Kratzser is an awesome addition to the Jenny Dean family. In his many roles at Dean, Mr. Kratzser shows the students how to be the best they can be, whether in his gym class, in the hallways, at lunch duty, or during dismissal. He expects the students to show responsibility at all times, as well as how to be respectful of each other and all staff at Dean. Mr. Kratzser is encouraging to students who may not have the confidence in themselves. Whenever we need something done at the school, he is one of the first to donate his time and effort. One teacher says her students especially look forward to PE class with Mr. Kratzser and always come back to tell her about the fun games and exercises they did in the gym. Sounds like it's a little jealousy, huh? No, just kidding. Dean appreciates Mr. Kratzser and looks forward to having him as a part of their family for a very long time. From Hayden Elementary, Alyssa Binko. Alyssa Binko is a special education teacher at Hayden, she is enthusiastic about her work and always has great ideas. She is a team player, and most importantly, she is an excellent educator who strives to do her best for her students. She meets challenging moments with grace and dedication, she always has a smile and loves working with all of the Hayden students. Not only does she work hard all day teaching, she also stays after school and helps coach the Hayden Running Club, and is an assistant cheer coach for Osborne High School. Congratulations to you, thank you. And now from Round Elementary School, Dina Caracciolo. Dina Caracciolo is the science teacher at Round, she has always had a students-first mindset. This year, she reworked her schedule based on feedback from teachers in order to create more meaningful learning opportunities for students when they go to the STEM lab. Students are always excited about their time in the lab and are fully engaged while they are there. She promotes meaningful collaboration amongst students and teachers, and she uses real-life problem-solving situations that are connected to the curriculum. She has made a point of working extra close with new teachers in the building to help them understand the curriculum and pacing on their lessons. Her enthusiasm for teaching and learning makes her a great asset to Round Elementary School. Congratulations. And from Weems Elementary School, Amy Bussard. Amy Bussard is a dedicated third grade teacher and a Wildcat, she knows her students and how to help them reach their full potential. Whether it is understanding a reading passage, solving an engineering problem, or navigating a social situation, Ms. Bussard asks the right questions to lead the student to find solutions independently. Ms. Bussard is also the school lead for PBIS and for that team. Through her leadership and daily modeling, both staff and students have embraced and live the PBIS way. She is respectful, approachable, and strives for excellence in all she does. Ms. Bussard's dedication to learning and helping those around her elevates both staff and students to be the best they can be. From Osborne High School, Maggie Connors. Maggie Connors started teaching at Osborne just one year ago. Since stepping foot on the Osborne campus, she has become heavily involved in student engagement and activities both in and out of the classroom. This year, she launched a commercial photography course and added her expertise to the CTE program. She bridges the gap between both CTE and fine arts. She is the faculty sponsor for Community Connections Network, or CCN, where the students photograph both Osborne and community events, as well as put images up onto the scoreboard during home games. She designed the cover for the cheer ad program, which is sold as a fundraiser at home games. She is a sophomore class sponsor, and she helps with the art club. This past summer, she was instrumental in the success of the youth salute posters and spent countless hours of her personal time taking pictures for youth salute students. Her time and attention to detail gave the photos of the students an extra flair and showcased each student's true gifts and talents while helping the photos represent the talented young people that they are. Ms. Connors truly goes above and beyond and has immersed herself into the OHS culture, and for this, they are grateful that she is an Eagle. Congratulations to you. Did I miss any Apple Award winners? Okay, congratulations to all of you, and I'll ask that, go ahead and take a picture of them. Y'all kind of scoot down that way a little bit?
Can you get the back to me?
Boo. Everybody scoot around.
You bet he doesn't.
Yeah, scoot on around this way.
Okay.
Some of you can go on this side. That's good, balance it out for us.
Everybody ready? Good now?
Who's down here?
One, oh geez.
Wait a second.
You want to be closer? One, two, three.
Thank you, congratulations. The school board Pear Award recognizes the people that support Manassas City Public Schools behind the scenes. These staff members include bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodial staff, instructional assistants, administrative associates, and others who support student learning. To be considered for the school board Pear Award nominees must demonstrate exemplary motivational characteristics, positive interaction with their peers, and noteworthy contributions to his or her department or school location. Pear Award recipients are as follows. From Baldwin Elementary School, Lorraine Hoyt. As the computer lab assistant, Baldwin says they are lucky to have Ms. Hoyt on staff because her positive demeanor is an asset to the school. Students love going to computer lab. Ms. Hoyt's dedication to Baldwin students is shown through her teaching. She has knowledge of where the students need to be at the next level and ensures the fourth graders are ready for their next steps. Staff members say it is exciting to hear the students talk about the new computer skills they are learning and their desire to use them in the classrooms. Ms. Hoyt will perform any task with a smile and a positive attitude. Congratulations, Ms. Hoyt, thank you. And from Jenny Dean Elementary School, Robert Dombinski. Jenny Dean says as an instructional assistant, Mr. Dombinski, or Mr. D., as he is affectionately called, is simply the best. An assistant is defined as a person who assists or gives aid and support, which colleagues say precisely describes Mr. D. He assists in every way possible at Jenny Dean and never says no to anyone asking for help. He graciously gives up his break time to volunteer in other grade levels to help struggling students, and he is an artist at heart, making posters and signs for various happenings at Dean. He is a pair in all sense of the word and is extremely deserving of this award. And from Hayden Elementary School, Melissa Inomorato. Melissa Inomorato has been the instructional assistant for special education at Hayden for two years. She is enthusiastic, artistic, and creative. Some say that you have got to see her Harry Potter collection or her room. She has great ideas and always helps out when needed. With the students, she is very flexible and caring. Ms. Inomorato has been a wonderful addition to the Hayden team, and she always supports the needs of her students. Congratulations to you, thank you. And from Round Elementary School, Ms. Ruth Dixon. Ruth Dixon has gone above and beyond with her duties as the school's technology support specialist. When teachers ask for help, she responds immediately and solves the issues so student learning can continue. Ms. Dixon is positive, helpful, knowledgeable, kind, and always has a smile on her face. Upon her arrival at the school in August, she got to work ensuring that teachers' technology would be functional and ready for students when they arrived. There hasn't been an issue with technology that she hasn't been able to come up with a solution. One teacher described her in this way by saying, "Efficiency is the word she works by." Congratulations to you. And from Weems Elementary School, Allison Teller. As a kindergarten instructional assistant for 12 years, Mrs. Teller has helped hundreds of students navigate through their first year of school and be prepared for first grade. She helps with everything from tying shoes to writing a story. Ms. Teller is also willing to lend a hand to help a colleague in need. Whether it is offering a car ride, making a banner, or assisting a new teacher, Ms. Teller is there. She is kind, compassionate, and well-loved. Her infectious smile and positive attitude make her a valued member of the Weems team. Congratulations to you, thank you. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Kim Capuccio. As a special education instructional assistant, Ms. Capuccio is always available to help in many areas of need. On any given day, one might see her helping a student maneuver a wheelchair, reading a test to a student, making copies for a teacher, covering a class for a teacher, monitoring the hallways and cafeteria, or recording audio tests in interactive achievement. During the summer, she can be found in the summer school office, working on attendance, providing ice to a student with a headache maybe, or covering a class for a teacher caught in traffic. Ms. Capuccio is truly a selfless individual. She will drop anything to help a colleague or assist a friend and a student. And perhaps more importantly, she always sees the positive in everything, children, colleagues, and the world. Ms. Capuccio's smile brightens the hallways every day at Mayfield, and she is very much appreciated. Congratulations, Ms. Capuccio. From Metz Middle School, we have Toya Brown. As a special education instructional assistant, Ms. Brown works tirelessly to help her students feel that they are a part of the Metz Middle School community. She demonstrates commitment to her students and Metz as an instructional assistant. Ms. Brown has been a big part of why several of the students she works with are speaking for the first time in their lives. It is heartwarming to watch her care for and advocate on behalf of her students. She's always upbeat and smiling. Her nominator says she deserves recognition for what she does every day to make Metz a great place to learn. Congratulations, thank you. From Osborne High School, Erica Redler. Erica Redler is an ITTS, or Instructional Technology Training Specialist at Osborne. Ms. Redler is a fantastic asset for the staff at Osborne, helping with grade books, websites, and those technological issues that can happen just before something big is due. Friendly, patient, and kind, Ms. Redler never makes anyone feel bad or incompetent. In fact, she is an expert at showing the staff a faster or easier way to accomplish a task, and her shortcuts are simply amazing. Erica Redler is definitely one of the rock stars of technology at Osborne. From our Support Services Maintenance Division, Jorge Nogera. As an HVAC tech two for MCPS, Jorge Nogera has continually gone above and beyond to support MCPS students and staff. He continually shows up to work with a smile and good spirits. He respects, he respects his coworkers, which is extremely vital when it comes to teamwork. He is bilingual, and those skills have been utilized countless times to communicate on behalf of the department. Mr. Nogera expands his abilities beyond HVAC and lends help to other departments on a consistent basis. He was a major factor in completing the LED hallway retrofit at Jenny Dean before the start of school. He manages to perform extra duties while also keeping the division's buildings comfortable for students and staff. Everything he does impacts education for the better. He is an asset to Manassas City Public Schools, and the maintenance team says they are very lucky to have him. From our Transportation Department, we have Tracy Cook. Tracy Cook is a special education bus driver. Pupil transportation is a very important job. Special education transportation with the constantly changing variables can at times be challenging, but Ms. Cook meets the challenge every day. She starts with having a great rapport with her pupils and their parents. Her demeanor is upbeat, funny, and yet professional. Whether it is on the bus, on the road, or back at Support Services, Ms. Cook makes her peers' days a lot brighter. From Human Resources, Deb Shelton. Deb Shelton is the Administrative Associate for Human Resources. She has been a very positive addition to the Human Resources Department. She always comes in with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. She works with everyone in the department, which can sometimes be challenging because she's faced with competing priorities every day. She's involved with everything from benefits, employment, coaches, volunteers, fingerprinting, and she has taken on the organization and management of the stipends for extra duties. She does it all efficiently and with a smile. Congratulations, Ms. Shelton. From our Curriculum Department, Janet Graham. As the Division Math Specialist, Janet Graham works in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction and serves all of MCPS students by working with instructional staff. She fosters leadership with the math coach team and works with teams and schools to analyze and understand their data while offering suggestions for instruction. Ms. Graham supervises curriculum writing for all math courses and grades and works to ensure SOL alignment and high-quality assessments are present. Ms. Graham creates and delivers professional development to coaches, teams, and individual teachers, and she even tutors some MCPS students on her own time. Over the past few years, the division's math scores have seen significant gains, and while this is due to the purposeful work of many staff members at each grade level, Ms. Graham is leading the charge. She also creates songs and mnemonics about math and math skills, and she and her husband have a traveling roadshow within the community for young learners. Ms. Graham will support math in any way she is asked, and her leadership within that content has been crucial to the division's success. Congratulations, Ms. Graham. And from Food Services, Susanna Ferrera. Susanna Ferrera is a cafeteria cook at Osborne High School. Right from the start, she showed a thorough understanding of the job skills required to perform her duties. She's always cordial and willing to help coworkers and students. She always maintains a positive attitude when under pressure and is dependable. She is an example to the rest of the staff. Ms. Ferrera never stops going above and beyond the call of duty and is very much appreciated at Osborne. Congratulations to you. Do we have any Pear Award winners that slipped in before we got to the end? Okay, congratulations to all of you, and if you could kind of just scoot down this way. Yeah, on either side, that's fine. There you go Jorge, just get over there. Some of you can get on the other side of Mr. Di Maria, that's fine. I know. Wait, she's trying, yeah.
She's working on it.
That's right, let's see.
And we're working on it. Yes, there we go. Ready, one? Um, well, one of them is.
I mean, yeah, that's okay. I think we're okay.
One, two, three. And you get two.
Okay, great. Okay, this concludes our spotlights.
Mr. Williams, anything from academics?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thanks. I think even my wife is leaving. I don't know if I can.
My wife is leaving. Bye, Doc. Was that for him or for me?
The quick report is that the academic committee met this afternoon with staff from Osborne and received some information on some new courses. The school board will hear about those new course offering proposals on November the 1st.
Thank you, sir. Education Support, Mr. Albrecht?
We have not had a committee meeting, sir, and I think anybody driving through Old Town sees the progress we're making on Baldwin, and that speaks for itself.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Sebreski?
No report.
Finance, Mr. Albrecht?
Yes, sir, just the members of the Finance Committee, we expect to get the proposals for Gillum Field demolition and demolition of Baldwin in November. Given our November schedule with VSBA, holidays, et cetera, the clerk will be getting a hold of Mr. Bushnell, Mr. Williams, and I'm thinking maybe Monday, Tuesday, of the 21st, 22nd of November, I don't know y'all's availability, but that would allow us to have a committee meeting before the December meeting. So, we'll try to work the logistics of that with when the proposals are due. Other than that, we do have the five-year forecast and CIP this evening, which is previous committee work.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell, anything on personnel?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll move to Board Member comments, Ms. Alonso.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That would be you.
I couldn't turn my mic on. I would just like to announce that this Friday and Saturday, the Osborne High School Theater Department will put on "Wait Until Dark." It's very good, I recommend you go and see it at 7:00. But also, even though all the teachers or most teachers are gone now, I would just like to take the time to thank teachers for their very hard work, because today I got the opportunity to work with second graders, like hands-on, because I do the peer mentoring program at Osborne High School, and you guys are very, very appreciated. I now realize how hard it is to like get kids to understand completely brand-new things to them, and I just want to thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maddick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you guys already know, it is Bully and Prevention Week. Last week, County Y, we all wore orange just to make everyone aware, and this week, we're wearing red just to continue with the bullying prevention. And I had a couple of things to say about it along the lines of, everyone, I believe everyone has experienced bullying at some point in their life, whether as a child or an adult, everyone experiences it, and we all know it's not very fun, and whether you are the victim or the bully, I think it goes both ways. I don't think anyone really gets much pleasure out of it. And I don't think nowadays bullying is really like shoving kids into lockers and stealing their lunch money. That doesn't really happen anymore, but it's really due to social media and kids hiding behind phones and saying nasty things that really hurt other people's feelings. And it can be in person, too, where you just say mean things. And it really makes me sad to see kids every single day in school being bullied, whether it's on social media or in person. And so I just had a few words of advice. I'm sure everyone's heard this, but if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. And if you have to sit on your thumbs, then you have to sit on your thumbs. But if you see anyone who's having a hard time, send a smile their way, and just remember, bullying can end with you, because if you're nice, everyone will try to follow your example. Thank you.
Thank you for being nice. Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say congratulations to all of those that were honored tonight, both students and staff members. There's so many great things going on in our schools, and I just wanted to mention a few that I've had the pleasure of experiencing this last week. A shout-out to Ms. Tracy Mazzaro and Tricia Vamosi, the Eagle Writing Center, and all the performers in the lounge last week at Osborne High School. These students poured out their heart and souls in poems, stories, lyrics, and music that both enlightened and entertained everyone in the casual environment. So if you missed out, I understand there's going to be another one in the spring. As Iris mentioned, "Wait Until Dark" is, there's two more shows Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 PM. You don't want to miss this. Mets Middle School is having their fall festival on Thursday afternoon, beginning at 4:00 in the afternoon, and there's going to be food available there for purchase. Our Mets Mustangs football team will take on Stonewall Middle School at 4:45, so come out and show them your support. They are collecting, doing a collection of socks. They have to be new socks, and so keep this in mind. If you are able to come, please bring some and donate some socks. Later in the evening, Mets is hosting a free Netsmart workshop, and this is for all Manassas City Public Schools' parents. I would like to encourage all parents to please come. This was an eye-opening program for me last year when I attended, and it's a great way to get informed on internet safety and learn how to protect your children and your family. I feel much more aware, Netsmart is an awareness and prevention program, internet safety, and it's led by a U.S. Secret Service agent, and there's a reason for that. She works with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. It's not for students, it is for parents. And if parents do bring their students, they're going to be sent to another room, so just come by yourself, get somebody to take care of the kids, do their homework at home, and please come. And that's at 6:00 in the Mets Auditorium, Thursday evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer didn't wear her Indians hat tonight, but...
I didn't.
Let's make them quick. She's got a game to get to.
I was going to say, I'm going to be brief. I do have a team who hasn't won a World Series since 1948, and they play soon their first opener. And my NBA team is finally getting their rings tonight, so it's a big shout-out to Cleveland tonight. But what it brought me to think about was, as I was listening to the PEAR and Apple Award winners, it was really about how it takes a team to get somewhere, whether your destination's the World Series, whether it's having the impact on a student that you've helped speak, that no one thought would ever speak. It really takes every single person, no matter where you stand on the field, no matter if you're in the bullpen waiting to be called upon to help, it's all about the team. And so it just really resonated with me, and all joking about the game tonight, it means something more to me than that. It's just, what's the end destination, and how do we get there? So I just wanted to congratulate everybody who received awards, those who haven't received awards but do really great work, and I'm glad we celebrate that. I also wanted to say I was able to pop in the Baldwin Bonanza, which was really a big hit. The families and other community members really had a great time. It was the last hurrah at the old Baldwin, and man, they really did it, did it up big. And I know there's a lot of other fall jubilees and boo-bashes that have either happened or about to happen, so hopefully we can drop by and have as much fun with those. I wanted to mention November 3rd, Stand Strong for Education. It is one of the largest education and business-focused events in our community. You will see more people in the division and their families there that night and get to know them, the businesses, and others who work together. So we're really excited. It's free-for-all, it's family fun, and everybody in the community should come. So, in the essence of being quick, I started with my reference to baseball, so of course I'm going to end with it. And it's sort of in honor of my grandfather, who instilled not just education in me, but just the importance of working really hard. And he happened to be the person who took me to my first Indians game and, you know, shared my childhood in that way. He was at the first field in Cleveland, he was at Progressive Field before he died, so he was really one of those guys that was really inspirational. And so I thought I'd leave it with a quote from one of baseball's great and most inspirational players, Jackie Robinson. And he said, "A life is not important except in the impact it has on other lives." And so again, I go back to the idea of, as a community, we must collectively work to create where we want to go, what we want to do. We all have to be involved along the way, so we have the greatest impact on our children that we can. So I say, go division, go Manassas, and go tribe.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, congratulations to all the honorees, who I think have all gone, but congratulations anyway. We appreciate all your work. I was told this evening by Ms. Binner that the Osborne High School Boys' Cross Country Team qualified tonight for regionals, so congratulations to them as well. It's a great accomplishment for them. Last Tuesday, I attended the Osborne High School Choral Concert, and the chorus was amazing. Ms. Easley, who was here tonight, is the new director, and she did a wonderful job. And if you get a chance to hear our kids sing, come here and sing. The fact that we had three kids out of our small school state choir is phenomenal, and it shows the great work that we're doing here in our Fine Arts Program. I heard the quote that the Osborne play, "Wait Until Dark," was amazing. There's a teacher who told me that she's not into plays, she loves sports, but she's going to see it again this weekend, so if you can check it out, please check it out. I encourage you to attend the Manassas Education Foundation Stand Strong for Education event. It's a great time and a great place to meet other folks and to see what our schools are doing. 5:30 to 7:30 on Thursday, November 3rd. And lastly, I was reading the New York Times last week, and no one reads paper anymore, it's online, of course. Maybe some of us read papers. My father-in-law reads the paper every Sunday, from front to back. He still does that, but most folks read online. Anyhow, there's an opinion noted by David Brooks called "The Power of a Dinner Table." I'm not going to read the whole article, but it touched me, and I was talking about this coworker, and it touched her as well, and I thought I'd just share it with you. Try to be briefly, brief and read it quickly, but it's kind of interesting. It starts off, Kathy Fletcher and David Simpson have a son named Santi who went to Washington DC public schools. He had a friend who sometimes went to school hungry, so Santi, their son, invited their friend to occasionally eat and sleep at his house. That friend had a friend, and this is a true story, just so you, this is not hypothetical. That friend had a friend, and that friend had a friend, and now when you go to dinner at Kathy and David's house on Thursday night, there might be 15 to 20 teenagers crammed around the table. And later, there will be groups of them crashing in the basement or in a few small upstairs bedrooms. The kids who show up at Kathy and David's have endured the ordeals of modern poverty, homelessness, hunger, abuse, sexual, insexual assault. Almost all have seen death firsthand to a sibling, a friend, or a parent. It's anomalous for them to have a bed at home. One 21-year-old woman came to dinner last week and said this was the first time she'd been around a family table since she was 11. And yet, by some miracle, hostile soil has produced charismatic flowers. Thursday dinner is the big social occasion of the week. Kids come from around the city, and cellphones are banned, and all you parents would love that. Cellphones are banned at the dinner table. The kids call Kathy and David mama and dad. They're unfailingly polite, they clear the dishes, they turn towards one another's love like plants toward the sun, and burst with big glowing personalities. Birthdays and graduations are celebrated. Each meal, we go around the table, and everybody has something to say that no one else knows about them. Each meal, we demonstrate our commitment to care for one another. I took my daughter once, and on the way out, she said, "That's the worst place I can ever imagine." During this election season of viciousness, vulgarity, and depravity, Thursday at Kathy and David's has been a weekly uplift. They said, "These kids need what all adolescents need: bikes, laptops, and a listening heart." Thank you for seeing the light in me, one young woman told Kathy after quiet on the couch. David and Kathy have set up a charitable foundation called AOK for all our kids to help each of the kids come into his or own fullness. Four started college this year. Poverty up close is so much more intricate and unpredictable than the picture of poverty you get from the grand national debates. The kids can project total self-confidence one minute and then slide into utter lostness the next. The college application process often seems like a shapeless fog to them. Nobody's taught them the concrete steps to move along the way. One young woman lied on her financial aid forms because she didn't want to admit that her father was dead, her mother was on drugs, how messed up her home life actually was. There's no margin of error for these kids, and she would have lost her college dreams if not for a squad of adults ready to mobilize around her. Souls are not saved in bundles. Love is a necessary force. The problems facing this country are deeper than the labor participation rate and ISIS. It's a crisis of solidarity, a crisis of segmentation, spiritual degradation, and intimacy. Throughout this ugly year, AOK has been my visit to a better future, more powerful than any political track that I've seen. Sometimes Kathy and David are asked how they ended up with so many kids flowing through their house. They look at how many kids are out there, and they respond, "How is it possible you don't?" If we could just take an ounce of what they do, and this is here in DC and our community, and as Ms. Kiefer alluded to, work and teamwork, we can really change our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sebreski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how you follow that. Want to be brief, because Ms. Kiefer's told me I need to be, because she's got to get to the game, as I'm sure the chairman would say the same thing. First and foremost, I want to thank all the honorees tonight, our students. I always love when they come and get honored for the great things that I know they're doing, but they are able to do those things because of the Pears and Apple Award-type people that we have. We have many wonderful educators and support staff in our system that just do great things for every student, every day. They make education better in the city of Manassas, not just those that we got to recognize, but many others as well. And without them, our students would not have some of the opportunities they get to have, and they would not necessarily get to grow up to be the great people that they are, to be great members of our community. So thank you all every day for what you do. I would like, as your board member that serves on the Education Foundation, even though it's already been mentioned, I'd like to invite everyone to the Stand Strong event at Mets Middle School on November 3rd. It's a great event. Last year, there was over 900 people in attendance. Lots of great opportunities to meet businesses, see what's out there in your local community, see our students perform, and just have great community time. We have such a great community here in Manassas, and it's a great way to just, for your students and your neighbors to all get to hang out together at a great time. So, thank you.
Blunt ending. Mr. Bushnell.
I don't want to say more, but I think it's better I don't.
Did you want to say more?
Nope, no, sir.
No, let her, no, 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 go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's always special when we get to honor the people who work for this division or the students who study here. We are a family. We are a family as a community, we are a family of educators. It's special to see what happens when people exceed what they're doing, when we honor people who excel as our employees, or who excel in the fine arts or whatever. It's one of the really nice parts about sitting up here, is to be able to see the people that are doing good jobs. But they are a part of a large family that is providing incredible education in the city. We can't honor everybody at every meeting, but every one of our teachers, every one of our classroom aides, the bus drivers, the people in the food line, every one of those people is impacting a child's life or a number of children's lives every single day. And when you hear people talk about, "There's a problem with this in the schools," or "There's a problem with that in the schools," take a step back and remember that we are asking teachers and aides and all of those people to deal with so many more things than they ever had to deal with when any of us were in school. They have to deal with things like helping a child speak. They have to deal with things like language barriers. They have to deal with health issues that, when I was in school, when any of us were in school, these health issues wouldn't have been in public education. Public education reflects the community that it's in. We have a responsibility to educate each child to the best of our ability, and it amazes me when I see the team that we've assembled to do that. So I'm honored to sit here with you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sincere congratulations to our Apple and PEAR winners. I think many people up here have said things. Ms. Kiefer, I thought you were actually going to quote the great Drew Carey and say Cleveland rocks, so...
That comes later.
Everybody's made the announcements. I think the only thing that I'd like to add is just a friendly reminder, this is the last time we will meet on the dais. We've got a couple of committee meetings, but on the dais before Election Day, so don't forget, folks, 11/8, November 8th. It is Election Day. I don't care how you vote, but go out and vote. It's your right constitutionally, it's your obligation, it's what makes us a great society.
Thank you, sir.
I do care how you vote, because I'll be stepping down, and I want you to fill this seat with someone who does a very special job, so I'll be watching.
Okay. Everybody's hit everything, all of my notes down here, so, Ms. Kiefer, you were right about the teamwork. We had, our teachers are obviously so critical to us, but there were more green bags over there than there were red. And our support staff is so critically important, and I hope everybody gives them the same respect that we give our teachers, because without them, we can't see going down the hallways. We got to have the lights working, you know, and all of that that goes with that. I was going to say, make sure you vote. Grab someone by the, what did we say, scruff of the neck? She straightened me out on what you should do, but grab them by the scruff of the neck and drag them to the polls. If there's somebody that are not going to vote the same way you're going to vote, drag them anyway. It's important that you get out and vote. And the last thing I have to say is, for the past, I don't know how long it's been, a year and a half, our clerk of the board left to go service in the military. And we had our deputy clerk at the time, Lee Miller, step in temporarily. Has it been two years yet?
Yes, sir.
It's been close. Has it seemed like two years, Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it seems like more than two years to her. And she did an admirable job, and then some. She has kept us all in order up here, me especially, and Lee, thank you very much. I know the board loves you, and I especially love you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're here. Okay. Citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. We have an agenda to complete. Because we have an agenda to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizen comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. I have one person signed up. Is it Zoe? Or Zoe?
Zoe Luzak.
Luzak. If you come up and, she lives on Reed Lane in Knoxville. So you don't have to repeat all of that. I got you.
Hi, my name is Zoe Luzak, and I'm a senior at Friendsville District High School. I am here today as a member of Y Street. Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. That's where the 24/7 campaign comes in, helping Virginia schools be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We are starting by working for 100% comprehensive tobacco-free school policies. I am here today to congratulate and thank the Manassas City School Division for being one of only 23 divisions in Virginia that already has 100% comprehensive tobacco-free policy. To show our appreciation and support, we would like to offer you a few things. First, we would like to offer the free tobacco-free signage, and this signage is 100% free. It can help fill any loopholes where your current signage may not cover. It can help fill any loopholes where your current signage may not cover, which may include main doors, cafeterias, and athletic fields. Second, we would like to offer our free tobacco-free toolkit to all schools in your division. A copy of this toolkit has been provided to the board chair. This toolkit includes several resources that your school can use to strengthen the communication and enforcement of their tobacco policy. Finally, we would like to invite schools in your division to participate in our statewide Day of Appreciation for 100% Tobacco-Free Divisions in Virginia on February 15th. The 24/7 Tobacco-Free Spirit Day is an opportunity for schools to show their tobacco-free school pride and earn positive publicity. This would include the students and staff at the schools in your division showcasing their tobacco-free spirit for a chance to win $247 for their school. This day is absolutely free. A kit will be sent to all participating schools with an engaging activity and items to give away to show their tobacco-free spirit. Last year, Osborne High School participated in our Spirit Day, and this year, we hope that the middle schools in your division sign up as well. Included in your folders is more information on Tobacco-Free Spirit Day and how to sign up at our website. You can sign up as a division, and we will contact you about how to reach your individual schools, or you can, or we can work with your individual schools to apply themselves. We are here to support you as much as we can. I would be happy to discuss how you can get your free signage and sign up for this Day of Appreciation after this meeting if you have any questions. On behalf of Y Street, thank you for helping keep Manassas City School Division healthy and 100% tobacco-free, and thanks for taking the time to speak with me.
Thank you very much, Zoe. I have no one else signed up. Is anyone like to speak? You happy, Ms. Kiefer? We will move on to the consent agenda.
We will adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the school board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Okay, that one out. Discussion agenda.
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement plan and draft five-year forecast. Mr. Hawkins is already up here.
Good afternoon, Chairman de Mary, Madam Superintendent, school board members. Tonight, we're going to talk about the five-year CIP forecast, and we'll continue our discussion that we had at our last meeting, I think it was the 13th, October the 13th. So, go to the CIP first, please. So, the CIP plan that we talked about, we had two changes that the board had requested that we move, and that would be to move the bleacher replacement that we had already put in FY '21, we moved it to FY '18. So, that's one change you see in yellow. If you move down, Lee, you'll be able to see another change where we added, I can move it, where we added a roof replacement at Mayfield for $2.5 million. And we, the board had requested, well, staff had recommended that we put this on the CIP. The board had requested that we move it from 2021 to 2020, and that's what we've done. One of the things that we talked about too also was the funding that we have available. Mr. Albrecht mentioned some of tonight. We have bid openings, I think it's on November the 2nd, for the demolition at Old Baldwin, and on the 16th, we have a bid opening for the Gillum Field relocation. And so, what those bids come back to be will, could have an effect on the CIP document. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns, comments about the five-year CIP as presented. I'll go to the five-year forecast.
Any other discussion that we had from last time, sir?
So, we're in discussion. There is no action, I think, Mr. Hawkins. We're just presenting this so that this is the basis the superintendent will use in the formulation of the superintendent's proposed budget. Is that?
Yes, sir. All right, let's go to the five-year forecast. So, we also looked at the five-year forecast at the last meeting. There have been, so let me go over this fairly quickly. The revenue has been adjusted back to a 2% annual growth for our state revenue is concerned. That's part of the assumptions we had originally had put in 3%. It's back, we've moved it down based on things that we're hearing out of Richmond, that it will be 2% seems more appropriate number of projecting going forward. Also, with the city revenue, you'll see that I have a highlighted asterisk there. Mainly what that asterisk is referring to is that the funding formula that we, at this school board, agreed to with the city council is, only goes through 2019. We've used those numbers going out through 2020 and 2021, '22, just for illustration purposes only. You know, the school board will revisit with city council in FY '18, and hopefully approved by FY '19 on the new funding formula going forward for 2020, '21, '22. Also, a change that you'll see from our last meeting was is that I went, I took all of the debt that we had on the CIP and sent it to a consultant that was, it's been hired through the city to verify and to determine what our debt service would be going forward for future years. So, and that company vendor's name is Davenport and Company, and they work, they are contracted through the city. So, you'll see that the debt service going forward is verified by outside experts will be in FY '19, it'll be $115,000, you know, in FY '20, it'll be almost $1.5 million, and in '21, it'll be $4.7 million. Those are the years that, those debt increases are years, especially in '21, is when we plan to replace Dean Elementary School. Going forward, the bottom line didn't change significantly as far as the, where we stand as far as a, didn't make a significant change from what we discussed at the last school board budget work session. Are there any questions, concerns, comments about five-year forecast?
Mr. Albrecht.
Mr. Bushnell.
Mr. Chair, I just point out, when you look at the debt service section, if you could go where you go, that this board has been planning all of our construction needs comprehensively for the last decade. We have planned our needs for the next 30 years. We have planned our needs for short term and long term. It's really important, when you look at the new debt service, the old debt service, to look at the number that is sitting there. In 2018, under Debt Service Fund, the $7.4 million, you can see how that drops off markedly in 2019. That's why we can afford to build a new Dean at that point. We've planned this, we know what we're doing, and this is excellent. In my estimation, this is an excellent five-year plan, because as you look at the new cost and the old cost, they don't exceed what we already know we've been able to afford. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht.
I want to kind of elaborate on that and, or peek you for a little historical recollection as well, because if you just look at this five, six-year window we're looking at, debt service is in this 7, $7.5 million range, going down to 5, peaking back up to 9. Historically, though, had not we had debt service in the 8, 9, $10 million range, I'm trying to think back, this is a 10-year plan we've been working on for...
We have had higher, with, obviously, we've planned so that as something goes out, something new comes in. We planned the construction of New Baldwin that way, and the new Dean is built in the same way. It's also essential to, when you look at this, to remember that this year represents a market change over what we've done historically. Previously, we've had a revenue-sharing agreement. You'll still hear people talk about us having a revenue-sharing agreement, except we don't have one. We're not sharing revenue. We have a funding agreement. We agreed to an amount of money that the city will provide to us to operate the schools on an annual basis. It is not a revenue-sharing agreement anymore. We're not sharing a percentage of revenue. We have negotiated an agreement between the city and the schools. So, when people talk about revenue-sharing, that's what we used to do. We're not doing that now.
Mr. Hawkins, you know what set of assumptions Davenport used for the out-year bonding? I mean, because the market right now is pricing stuff in for a year or two. That far out, I have no idea what people are looking at, and I'm just curious what they said.
So, right now, they've used a very conservative number. They went out on 20-year bonds, and they were charging 4.5% interest, which I think is very conservative.
In today's market, that's high, not knowing the future, that's probably safe. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Operations update? Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you.
Just stand there and keep going.
All right. So, let's go to, tonight, I want to give you some updates on several different areas. The first one would be on our energy savings. So, we're comparing what we did in FY '19 versus FY '16, and you can see the differences between electricity, natural gas, water, sewage, all the way down. And you can see that we've had some significant savings in some areas, in other areas, we've had some slight increases, but they were due to, mainly due to areas, God, sorry. They were mainly due to repairs that needed to be made in the school. So, and the stormwater damage costs were, stormwater costs, consumption costs were, this is the first time this year that they were assessed. So, that's a new cost that we really can't control. That's not based on our consumption, or we don't have any effect on how that cost is determined. So, this is, if you look at the utilities report that we have by school, by area, you can see that we've had significant reductions in cost from year over year. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, though, it's no accident that our two oldest schools that we have, which are Baldwin and Dean, have higher square footage cost than all of our other schools. We show it by the cost per square foot so that it will highlight areas of concern, where we need to go work at. Now, New Baldwin is coming on board, so we will be looking at Dean to see if there are any areas that we can do to help reduce our utilities cost in that school, but that's the next school that's in line to be replaced. But overall, we've had, you know, almost 7% in savings, almost $120,000 worth of cost savings from one year to the next. So, some of the projects, you know, Mr. Albrecht, Mr. Bushnell have talked about careful planning. Some of the projects that we've done through our CIP have helped contribute to these energy savings, and they're shown on the screen now, where we have LED lighting being put in, we have some variable air handlers being put in, you know, the design for, you'll see where we have, we've been seeking and receiving Energy Star designations, like Brown and Dean, both now have just recently been deemed Energy Star, received Energy Star designation. We believe that Williams and Hayden qualify, we just have to get the inspector to be able to come up to verify, to give his approval. Like we said, New Baldwin Elementary Intermediate is designed to be to Energy Star standards, and so we believe that school will be there. Metz, Mayfield, Osborne are still currently under review. We feel pretty confident that all of them will make it. The one of only concern maybe is Mayfield, but the rest of them, we feel confident will make it. And we'll be working with Mayfield and to make, ensure that they all become, all of our schools become Energy Star schools. That's our goal. So, to stop our camera system.
Can you hold on one second?
Mm-hmm.
Go back. Does anybody have a question on that?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
If I can go back to energy conservation and the $1.6 million, I'm assuming it's all utilities, water, sewer, gas, everything.
Total fiscal year '16, you mean?
Correct, for '16. The $1.48 average, and you're right, range of $1.20-something to, as you say, $1.70 to the older schools. Utility costs are different everywhere across the state, but is there any kind of benchmark nationally, regionally, we should be looking at?
Well, I think when we are looking at approximately $1.40, $1.35 area, that's where we ought to be. All the rest of them, we need, we know that we have, we've got improvements that have been made this past year during FY '16 for Metz and Mayfield. We expect those costs to go down to a more, to around $1.40 around Osborne High School. So, I think that when you look at these between $1.33, $1.40, you know, all of these from Osborne, I think that's about where we ought to be, is about $1.40. We, like I said, we have had some equipment failures at Metz and Mayfield, and we've made some controls, changes throughout the, especially at Metz, that we believe will help us reduce the cost in those areas. So, when we have this report, well, I'm going to give you an annual report, but hopefully I'm going to give you a quarterly report, too. This report due to when we receive our utility bills is going to lag a month, but hopefully by this time next month, I can show you some updates about these schools, and I'm hopeful that Metz and Mayfield will be more in line with the other schools.
And just an observation, and it's kind of common sense, but you have to think it through, it's twice as hard to save money in utilities because the price keeps going up. So, you've actually got to focus on consumption. And all us with kids, we sound just like our parents, we say, "Turn the lights out." And we swore we'd never sound like our parents, but we are. The fact that you're saving 7% or 8% off raw usage and driving that kind of a price savings is significant. It's a real tribute to you, staff, and everybody looking at, what are we doing and how can we deliver the same mission for less cost?
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, so you can go to stop on cameras.
All right, stop on camera system, give you an update. So, we're still continuing to, so from September the 8th through, October the 7th, we've had over, we've had approximately 311 recorded violations, which on average is about 14 violations per day. So, you want to know, well, it doesn't...
Anybody want to say wow, and you just say "raw" at once? This is amazing.
Holy smokes. People, pay attention when you drive. My golly.
So, it really doesn't matter what day of the week, except Friday. I mean, it seems like, but still Friday's still pretty high, but approximately 14, 15 passes per day of our buses. I have inquired with the vendor to try to determine exactly where these passes are being made, and we haven't been able to receive that information as of tonight, but hopefully we will be able to give you an update of where the majority of these violations are occurring. But I would imagine, I don't think it's any secret where we think they are, and be it major roads like, you know, Liberian Centerville Road is where my guess would be.
How much is the ticket?
Ticket is $250 apiece.
And the grace period ends or ended when?
So, they haven't, they've been having technical difficulties with the vendor being hooked up with the DMV and with other financial institutions where you can pay online. So, we haven't issued any citations as of yet.
But the grace period is over.
The grace period will be over.
Want to get that figured out?
I've been told that we will go live one day this week. I mean, the DMV issue was resolved today, and they anticipate any other issues being resolved tomorrow, and so we should be going live Thursday, Friday of this week.
Thank you. Mrs. Sipesky, do you have something?
Yes, just a quick, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, I don't think it's a coincidence that on Mondays is the highest day. People don't pay attention, as well as we have a lot of pass-through traffic in the city of Manassas. I experienced it a lot in my neighborhood, students going over to Osborne Park from the county, coming through my neighborhood. So, I think that we're going to find that it's not just Centerville Road and some of our more obvious roads, but through neighborhoods that are commonly used for cut-throughs. I have seen the buses on Oak and Shaw be passed by vehicles on a somewhat regular basis. So, as a parent standing there with my children, so I do think... So, as a parent standing there with my children, so I do think that, it is amazing, it is shocking that in this day and age that that's still happening, but I'm glad that we're gonna be able to keep more of our students and our drivers safer with this type of program. Thank you.
Let me just talk, there's one more question, just from a reference perspective, because you used the word violations, and our process we've put in place, these aren't, the stop-arm camera was initiated in the vendor's reporting, have these been adjudicated through the police? And were it not for technical difficulties, this is what you'd report?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Wow.
All of these, all of these violations have been reviewed and approved by the police department. If it hadn't been for these technical difficulties with the DMV and others, we would have issued this many, 311, just in that period alone.
But that's, but that's the real reason that we added these cameras.
That's right.
311 times in the last month, drivers have endangered the lives of your children by illegally passing a school bus. 311 times in one month. That's just, that's unbelievable. Maybe it will hurt the pocketbook a little bit for some of these folks to be fined $250. Maybe they'll think about it the next time, but it's, this isn't about money. This is about the safety of the children in this city. And these are steps we're taking to make those children safer, but 311 times, they've risked our children's lives. It's unbelievable.
Approximately 15 times a day.
That's our wow factor. Thank you, sir.
All right, next update is about the Baldwin construction update. So we didn't receive temporary, full temporary occupancy permit today. Today is the 25th, but we did receive it from most of the building. So the kitchen, the gym, the K4 dining room, and the activity room are the only areas now that are, do not have a temporary occupancy permit. And, but we do expect them to receive it in full one day this week. That's what we're being reported to us from the vendor. So all of these others are where we, our schedule of going forward of how we plan to transition from the old Baldwin to the new Baldwin. So between the 31st and November the 2nd, all of our furniture and technologies will be delivered and installed. On December the 6th, the media center will be moved over to the new Baldwin. All instructional materials will be moved over on the 16th. On the 18th, we are supposed to have final completion of the school. On the 19th, we plan to have a community tour, and I want to say it's from 5:00 to 8:00. I'm not sure we've actually depend, settled on a date, I mean, a time, but we'll be back with more details about that. Plan to have a ribbon cutting and student transfer on the 20th. And I think the tentative time for that is 10:30 in the morning on the 20th, so please mark your calendars for that. On the 21st, everything else that we're gonna bring over from old Baldwin to new Baldwin will be moved over on the 21st. And that's mainly teacher materials and supplies. Most of the stuff will have been, of the contents that we're gonna bring over, will have been brought over already by, on the 16th. Shouldn't be very much left by the 21st. So sometime between the 22nd and the January 2nd, the teachers will report during that period of time, and will set up their classrooms and be ready for opening day on January the 3rd. The principal, you know, Laura Golzon, is wonderful, and she will be at school most of those days during, what a break, to help with teachers and staff to set up the classrooms and be ready on January the 3rd. So here's some pictures of the building. These were, these pictures, these first two pictures were taken, I think, yesterday morning, or maybe this morning, this morning, or yesterday? Do you remember? One day this week. So this is aerial view from the outside. The first one was the front of the building, as it faces Osborne, and this is the back of the building. A more up-close version of the front area. By the way, I don't want you to be confused, these areas that are covered up, there's just protective material on top of them, they're just gonna tear that away. They just, it's just protective material on it for right now. All of these areas in yellow, when this picture was taken yesterday morning, all of that has been fixed and completed as of now. But, you know, people ask me all the time about this area, when is the front gonna be fixed? Well, it is fixed, it's just got protective material over it for the time being. Some more exterior pictures. This is the first, first floor classroom. Some of the second floor extending learning area. Just flip through these, third floor classroom. So you can tell that the building is come a long way, and it's very close to completion. This is the dining area for pre-K4. Picture taken from the second floor. So this is the outside learning area. These pictures will not be, of course, lined up that way. They've been put together and it's just stored there. They'll be around, probably around the fence area. So any questions, concerns, comments about Baldwin Construction?
Yes, sir.
The superintendent's smiling, everybody should be proud.
Yeah. I also have to say that having had the pleasure of being a parent at old Baldwin, this is coming just in time, that I'm hearing stories that old Baldwin is starting to fail a little bit here, fail a little bit there, and it's getting ready to be put out of its misery, so.
Or out of our misery.
Couldn't happen sooner, soon enough.
Okay, final update for me tonight is about enrollment. So I'm gonna try not to confuse you tonight, we're gonna talk about three different kinds of numbers, okay?
We're gonna know your audience.
We're gonna talk about all students, which is pre-K through 12. We'll talk about just K-12 enrollment, and then I want to make sure we talk about ADM. And ADM is Average Daily Membership, and that's what we are paid by from the state per student, okay? So that's a very important budget number. So the first one is all students, based on our projections. Where we were in FY16 versus, what the projection was in 16 versus what the projection was in 17, and you can see the actual numbers. So we historically done a very good job of projecting. So for example, for FY17, I don't hate to jinx this, but this is 99.7% right with that, based on the projection. So we'll try not to cause a Cleveland curse, or jinx, or whatever it may be. So the enrollment going forward for all students, pre-K through 12, you can see has been going up over the years. In fact, if you look at a breakdown of it, it's approximately, it's been going up about 1.3% over the last two years, but throughout the period, it's about one and a half percent from 2011 and through FY17. All of that averages out to be 1.59%. Our overall enrollment during this period has increased 9.9%. With the highest, the highest enrollment change in elementary is 11.3%, and at the intermediate school, 15.5%. So we've had some change in enrollment. This is, I think this is a good growth rate for us, where we'll be able to keep up with it. We certainly don't want to, I wouldn't think we'd want to grow at the rate that some of our surrounding counties are growing at. Be hard for us to keep up and provide adequate services for those students. So if we look at K-12-
Hold on one second.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make a quick statement. Back in 2011, this board recognized that we were going to not have enough capacity in our schools based on these projections. And so I just want to make that kind of, this makes it really obvious, that our enrollment is up approximately the size of an elementary school. We're up almost 700 students-
632.
-in six years. And so I just think it's important for people to see that, to see that, that we were up that many students, we had to prepare for that, that's why Baldwin had to be built, not just because it was falling apart, but because we needed capacity. And if this continues, this is why, another reason why Dean has to get built, because we have another capacity issue coming, from what we can tell from projections. So it's because of the great advice that we get, like you said, how accurate your projections, the projections were, that we have, this is how we base our planning and how the planning has to occur, not a year or two in advance, but several years in advance. Thank you.
And all indicators are showing that we will continue to grow at this rate for the foreseeable future.
Yes.
Ms. Bushnell?
I also can't stress enough how important it is that these projections have been accurate within a few tenths of percentage points for years, that our planning has been spot-on. And to be 99.7% accurate in projecting the number of students with all of the variables that happen in a community where people move in, move out, the planning that is done here is accurate, it's historically been accurate, and we've been able to make these plans be real, because we're dealing with real numbers. But it's amazing that year in, year out, the metrics change, the reasons change, but we're still able to pull the numbers together, and that's a credit to the staff and to the people who look at these numbers in an ongoing fashion. But this is incredible from a planning perspective.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
I want to reinforce that. This is why we need to make data-driven decisions. Hard to remember this if we go back in time, and before I was elected, we built Mets, and members of this community said, that's the last school we'll ever build. I can remember when I ran for the school board in 2000, the perception of the city was, we're built out, and we don't need to build schools. Since then, we've put additions on to Weems and Hayden, to what Mrs. Sibeski said, we've built Mayfield, and we recognize this growth is continuing. The city still, we all think, is built out, but somewhere, we keep on having students and attracting, so we have to continue to do what we're doing, our projections going forward into 2025 and 2030 with where they are and where we're trying to take our long-range facilities plan. You know, it's a plan, and it's a continuing, ongoing effort that we've got to constantly reinvigorate and look at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hawkins?
All right, so now we're gonna shift to, shift to K-12 enrollment, and see what our enrollment change has been year over year, from September the 30th, 16, to September the 30th, 15, broken down by grade level. And so you can see, I think for the first time in a good while, our elementary enrollment actually went down a little bit from the prior year. But you can see that those increases in elementary have funneled through to the other grade levels, and continuing to go through. So overall, about 56 students more K-12 than what we had in FY, on September the 30th, 2015, as far as K-12 enrollment is concerned. All right, one more switch, and this is budgeted on the ADM. An Average Daily Membership is the calculation that's made by the state to determine how many students that we are going to receive state funding for. So, so let's go, it started at the bottom first, and let's go to FY16. I'll put this number in here for you to show you, it was on the previous slide, our K-12 enrollment on September the 30th, 2015 was 7353. But by the time when the ADM is calculated on March 31st, we, our student membership was down to 7230. But we had to staff up to the level that we had on September the 30th. And I think one of the school board's legislative agenda items is to change the date of when we start counting kids to September the 30th and not March the 20th, because we still got to teach them from September the 30th to March 31st. So you can see how much difference the change in the enrollment goes down between that time period. So for FY17, our enrollment is 7409, K-12 enrollment at this point in time, we budgeted our ADM at 7298. So at this point in time, we're 111 students above our budgeted ADM. But our enrollment fluctuates, and so we anticipate that our enrollment will decline. We're predicting it'll be at 7298 on March 31st, but, you know, we will pick up students from now, generally speaking, through the first of the year, and then when January comes, we typically lose children through March 31st, has been the pattern. All right. Any questions, concerns?
Yes, sir.
Andy, you started off talking the differences between pre-K12, K12, ADM. About 270, 269 was the number, looking like you're showing in pre-K. How does that relate, talking from a budgetary perspective, relative to what we budget? Sounds like it's a little lower than we thought it might be.
Well, I think it is a little lower. What is the actual amount of authorized number of children for pre-K? Is it 285? Okay. So we had 285. At discount, on September the 30th, we're at 269. They anticipate filling all of those slots. The instructional team is working to bring us up to the 285 mark. We're not gonna leave any slots, or we'll try not to leave any slots unvacant.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. We'll move on to the-
Technology.
Parent and Community Leadership Academy information. Oh, Ms. Rafferty. I didn't know what it didn't say. You gotta wait for them to move.
I'm here to talk about enrollment, too, in a different perspective, so. Thank you for having me back. I would like to talk a little bit about our Parent and Community Leadership Academy. What is the Manassas City Public Schools' Parent and Community Leadership Academy? So as you can see, it's designed for parents and community members who want to gain a better understanding about our school system and our community. Through participation, the members of our cohort also have the opportunity to grow personally and become better equipped to take on a more active leadership role in the schools and in the city. And I've had the privilege of serving in the PCLA, which I will refer to it as that moving forward, with Dr. McGurk, and it is an exciting thing. The dynamics of the PCLA include sessions where we discuss items such as policies and procedures of the school division, legislation and government, curriculum, school finance, and community resources. Even though it's limited to 25 participants in the two cohorts that we've done already, we've graduated more than 50 people from it, and it's been exciting for them. There are seven sessions in formats that look like presentations, guest speakers, panel, group discussions. It's a very interactive session and group time, very engaging. The goals of the PCLA are to raise awareness about how public education works in relationship to the community, to develop leadership capacity for our participants through conversations and experiences with other leaders. And then we also want them to take away and enhance communication between the school system and the community at large, not just about the schools, but about how we work together with other community resources and organizations. I would like to highlight some of the things that we have witnessed as a result of the establishment of the PCLA. Several members of our first cohort applied for a vacancy on the school board, with two members being selected to serve, who are here tonight, Ms. Kiefer and Ms. Seberg. Others are pursuing additional leadership opportunities within the schools and the community. We've had members that have gained confidence to speak before you, based on information that they've gained by participating in the PCLA, and also at city council meetings. Since graduation, a lot of our members have stayed connected, and they do continue to collaborate on behalf of the schools and the community in various organizational groups. I see them interacting with each other on social media, and many of them contact my office for different ways that they can serve. Our graduates have been called upon to assist with various events hosted by the school division. They've also served as participants on local and state panels and focus groups. Most recently, even over the summer, we've had the privilege of hosting the state for several different events. The governor was here, State Board of Education has been here, and in those times, we've been able to call on our graduates and ask them to assist us in facilitating during those times. So to give a little bit of overview of how the sessions are run, as I said- So, to give a little bit of overview of how the sessions are run, as I said, we have about six sessions, and then the final one is our graduation. But session one is our introduction, and we really just talk about the whole purpose of the program and what our participants can expect to take away. Session two is an exciting one, because it talks about sharing power and influence, and during that time, our school board members, our city council, and our state leaders and government are able to come and share with our participants and allow them to ask questions and to find out how things work behind the scenes, especially with regards to funding and how all of these entities work together for the greater good. Our session three is about student achievement, and we have a time where all of our staff comes in to introduce themselves and to help people understand the inner workings of the school system. Our session four, Creating Clarity, the Budget Process, is an exciting one, because a lot of times, people don't always understand how the budget works, how the cycle goes, and we have our finance staff come and share information with our group at that time. Session five, Student Achievement, what it looks like in action, is a very exciting one, because this is a tour of schools. So, we take our participants around on one of our school buses, and we visit classrooms where they can talk to students and see things like our blended learning program, where they can see the tag program at Weems, or how a lot of our kids are interacting with each other inside the classroom in some of our exciting programs. We also have Collaborative Leadership, which is our sixth session, and that's on community resources. And so, it's always exciting to bring in the key leadership and resources from the community, like our chief of police, our fire and rescue people, our education foundation are among some of the guests that we've had previously. So, I think it's also exciting to recognize and remember that our participants are also asked to attend a school board meeting or work session, and that's really just so that they can observe how meetings are run and how decisions are made. So, somebody might wanna know how they can apply. They can see me. I do have applications with me tonight, if anybody would like to have one. But this is open to current Manassas City Public Schools' parents and Manassas City residents, also for business owners in the city of Manassas. So, the application is available on the MCPS website, and it is open until November the sixteenth. We plan to notify our accepted participants by November twenty-first, because our first session starts December first. Our sessions are once a month, from five-thirty to eight-thirty P.M., typically at the central office, and once we establish that location, that information will be shared with the participants. But I think it's exciting, as I said, I've worked with Dr. McGurk on our previous two cohorts, and we've gotten to know a lot of our parents and community members as a result of this, and I think it's been great being able to see them have the confidence to go out and to do a lot of things on their own, and to see them wearing their name tags as they participate out in the school, so that people can identify them as PCLA grads, has been really gratifying.
It really has, it's nice to see them out and about and being proud of what they've done. Are there any comments?
I can't help my, I can't help myself.
Well, I was gonna go with our graduates, but it's-
You know, I'm on the campaign trail right now, and one of the things that keeps coming up is community engagement. And I sound like a broken record when I talk about, "We don't have a newspaper." So, I really appreciate the fact, what we as a system are doing in the outreach, and we can talk social media all day long, but this is a real grassroots knowledge transfer, that we're going out there, and it's open, and I encourage the business owners and the residents of the community, about two-thirds of whom, by the way, don't have children in our schools. So, whether you have a child in our schools, a parent, you're a resident of the community, this is your chance to get engaged, to become involved, and learn about what's really happening.
He said, "Knowledge transfer." That's just really cool. I just like that. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it very much. We'll go to our action agenda. Appointment of clerk and deputy clerk. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Alba Garza as clerk of the board and Lee Miller as deputy clerk of the board for the period October twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen, to the organizational meeting on January third, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Gotta be quicker, people. A motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the city of Manassas accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Alba Garza as clerk of the school board and Lee Miller as deputy clerk of the school board from October twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen, through January three, two thousand and seventeen, which will be our organizational meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carry seven, nothing. I figure you would.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kiefer, second by Mrs. Sebeski, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, zero. Thank you, everyone.